President Reed, you may proceed.
Thank you. The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Mathias.
President.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Present.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Iglesias.
Present.
Alderman Calder. Alderman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Gunther.
Here.
Alderman Ballmer.
Present.
Alderman Martin.
Present.
Alderman Grass. Alderman Murphy.
Here.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderman Rhodey.
Present.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
Present.
Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vaquero.
Present.
Alderman Narayan.
Present.
Alderman Combs. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Navarro.
Present.
President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Calder. I'm sorry, Alderman Calder. Alderman Grass.
Present.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Combs. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Twenty-one present.
For him being present, we will be led today in prayer by Reverend John Watson, Jr. of Maple Temple and our resident minister, Reverend Watson. You have to unmute yourself. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. God bless each and every one of you. Before we get started, we want to have a moment of silence. There are two dear mothers of our Board of Alderman staff and a bishop who passed, and one of those is the longtime, the mother of our longtime secretary, Ms. Sarah Gleason. She passed away, and we want to wrap our arms around her and embrace her and support her. Ms. Merlio Mae Gleason passed away and belated to rest on November the 28th. We also have our own 26-word Alderman Shamene Clark, the unexpected passing of her mother, Ms. Rochelle Clark. She's also the daughter of the late Joe Clark, who was an alderman and also a public safety director. So he served the city of St. Louis also. So we thank God for her family and the service that they are rendering to the city. So we want to have a moment of silence and embrace her also and support her also in this time. So we want to have a moment of silence. We quote from the Holy Scriptures. "But there is a spirit in man, and the breath of the Almighty gives them understanding." Gracious God, Heavenly Father, with gratitude of heart and mind, we start this day as we serve the citizens of our great city. We continue to open our hearts and our minds to your inspiration and direction. Breathe on us so that we may know how to administer justice, peace, and equality through our laws, statutes, and our actions. Then will all of us experience the understanding and the knowledge of your goodness toward all your children. Into your arms we commit ourselves, our family, our community, our nation. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Watson. I really appreciate it. And please keep both Sarah and Alderman Clark Hubbard in your thoughts and prayers. Their family, they're going through a very difficult time, especially right before the holiday season. So this is a very, very difficult time for them. So please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And thank you, Reverend Watson, for the moment of silence. We dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 23rd.
As always, my good friend Greg Myers is my special guest today.
Welcome, Greg. Alderman from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. President. My honored guest today is Inez Wardo. I'm Director of Community Collaboration and Organizer with Close the Workhouse.
Welcome. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Any further introductions? All right. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes, Friday, November 13th, 2020.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the minutes dated November the 13th, 2020.
Second. Twenty-second, second about Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. And Alderman from the 10th, I'm sorry, I've missed you two weeks in a row on introduction.
Well, you better, if you're missing me, you better work on your aim.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm coming back to you if you want to do your introduction. I'm sorry.
No big deal. Today is, what is today? November 20th. This is National Peanut Butter Fudge Day. More importantly, it is also our President-elect Joe Biden's birthday.
Oh.
And for all you techies, in 1985, Windows 1.0 was released. So that's how far it comes since then. More importantly, there's only 41 days left in 2020.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you all. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Grove Community Improvement District. The appointment of Mr. Neil Griffin, whose term will expire June 30th, 2024, replacing Jack Baumstark. The appointment of Ms. Jessica Mueller, whose term will expire June 30th, 2024. The appointment of Ms. Kelly Spencer, whose term will expire June 30th, 2024. The reappointment of Mr. Guy Slay, whose term will expire June 30th, 2024. And the reappointment of Mr. Don Bellin, whose term will expire June 30th, 2024. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment. Sincerely, Lyda Kruston, Mayor.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the mayor's appointments to the Grove Community Improvement District.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we accept the mayor's appointments.
Move by Alderman from the 17th, second by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? The move in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for the appointment to the Central West and South Special Business District. The reappointment of Mr. John McElwain, whose term ending December 30th, 2022. The reappointment of Mr. Milton Rothschild, with a term ending December 31st, 2023. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments. Sincerely, Lyda Kruston, Mayor.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Central West and South Special Business District.
Yes, Mr. President, I move to approve the mayor's appointments.
Second by Alderman from the 10th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries.
That is the extent of report of city officials.
Dispend with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move Board Bill 152 to the regular perfection calendar.
All right, Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Place Board Bill 152 as amended at the end of the regular perfection calendar. Would anyone like to take any further bills or resolutions off of any of our formal calendars? We dispense with line items eight through 10. First read in the board bill.
I'm sorry, there we go.
Yeah, hold on. Madam Clerk, can you hold one second?
Sure.
Alderman from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 167 from the floor.
Again.
The move by Alderman from the 8th, second by Alderman from the 9th. Any discussion? Yes. Alderman from the 23rd.
So I do have a question for the Alderman from the 8th.
Okay. And remember, we're just discussing the introduction right now. So.
And it's still.
Would you like her to yield?
Yes.
Alderman from the 8th will yield a question until Alderman from the 23rd.
Sure.
So how long ago, it's a fairly long document, how long ago? I didn't receive it till 9:30 last night when I was getting ready to go to bed. Yet you expect me to vote on it when I would have to feel that you probably had had this in your hands long before 9:30 last night. And why it wasn't sent at a time that everyone could actually look into what we're voting on. I may not have a problem with it. I have a problem that the timing, it seems intentional to send something out a little over 12 hours before we have to vote when you had, most likely had to have had this done days ago. So my question would be, why did you hold it till 9:30 last night?
So thanks, Alderman, for the question. I am asking to suspend the rules this morning to introduce the bill because we were planning to move a board bill forward. The board bill needs to be introduced so that we have time before December 31st to potentially pass a bill if that's what this body decides to do. In order, well, on Friday of last week, there was an agenda that, our agenda stated that we had a meeting this coming Wednesday, November 25th. I was informed on Monday that that meeting is not actually happening, and that was a mistake on the agenda. So we're planning, if we were planning, we need three meetings. If we were planning to introduce it to get those three meetings, it could have been done to be introduced or to be filed today, to be introduced before that meeting next Wednesday. But because that meeting is no longer there, then we had to rush to get this, get the board bill finalized. So I received a finalized copy back from the clerk around, I think it was around six-ish yesterday, and I sent it back out to the full board with courtesy to you all. It's actually just a 14-page bill. With the rest of the, the rest of the pages on there are the budget documents ordinance from this calendar year. So it's just those first 14 pages, and all I'm asking for is for introduction this morning. Not unsubstantive discussion. You don't have to take a position one way or the other on the bill. I'm just asking to be introduced today so that we have a chance to uphold our commitment with Close the Workhouse.
My issue still is the timing. So I, you know, I don't know that I can support something that I got that I haven't had the opportunity to even read.
Well, I guess I'm not really asking for your support for the underlying, you know, the substance of the bill. I'm just asking to introduce the bill. And if you do read all of the bills before first read, then that's very admirable, Alderman. And that's great.
I like to make sure that I have a really good understanding of where each bill's at. That's all the questions I have.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would the Alderman from the 8th yield for questions?
Alderman from the 8th will yield for questions.
Yes.
Please keep your questions remain just to the, just to the suspension and introduction.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman from the 8th, could you let me know, I'm just curious, how many of the board bills that are on the agenda that are being first read that you read before the meeting where they're being introduced? Personally, I generally just skim them to see what they are. I read the agenda to see what's coming introduced because we have ample opportunity to dig into those bills in committee and then perfection and final passage. So. Okay. Are those bills, first-read bills always available to us prior to first reading? Um, they, well, they're actually more available now than they have been before COVID times. So thanks to Mr. Clerk, we have a really great system that those are sent out in the Google Drive ahead of time. So we have more of an opportunity now than we have in the past to read bills before first introduction here. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time. No further questions.
All right. In further discussion, in further discussion. All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the 8th, second by Alderman from the 9th that we suspend the rules for purposes of introducing Board Bill 167 for first read. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Mathias.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
No.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
No.
Alderman Hubbard.
No.
Alderman Iglesias.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Grass. Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard. Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Rhodey.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
No.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
No.
Alderman Vaquero.
No.
Alderman Narayan.
Aye.
Alderman Combs.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
No.
Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Uh, no. I mean, aye, sorry.
Alderman Grass. Alderman Howard.
No.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Seventeen, aye votes.
I'm, I'm here.
I'm sorry. Alderman Bosley.
No.
That was seventeen aye votes and nine no votes.
By vote, you failed to sustain the motion of Alderman from the 8th, first reading the board bills.
Board Bill 166, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance pertaining to the exercise laws of the City of St. Louis, amended ordinance 68536, presently codified in Chapter 14.06 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, having as their subject matter drink license, licensing, employee-related licensing requirements, and employee criminal background checks, and containing a severability, emergency, and a penalty clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 166. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of HUD with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 136, sponsored by Alderman Evans, an ordinance approving a blinding study and redevelopment plan for the North Newstead Avenue, Lexington Avenue, Whittier Street, Kennelly Avenue redevelopment area. Board Bill 159, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance dissolving special allocations fund for the 4494 Lindell redevelopment area and terminating the designation of a certain portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri, relating to such as redevelopment area, repealing ordinance number 70157, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto.
We'll just, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Board Bill 164, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress, except as noted under the proposed time scheduled for completion of projects therein. Board Bill 165, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and Alderman Navarro, an ordinance repealing ordinance number 66420, ordinance number 64928, ordinance number 65724, ordinance number 65910, and ordinance number 65443, dissolving the special allocations fund for the Maryland Plaza North, the Convention Headquarters Hotel, 1141 through 11551, South Seventh Street, 1312 Washington, and MLK Plaza area redevelopment projects, and terminating the designation of a portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as redevelopment areas, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
We would dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 148, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Calder, an ordinance for the adoption of the 2020 edition of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, annotated with the charter, tables, and cross references to former codes included, and providing for the retention, distribution, and supplementation of the Revised Code and with an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Again, Alderman from 22nd, second by Alderman from 10th, any discussion? Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 152, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Iglesias and Alderman Rice, an ordinance to amend ordinance 70624, approved October 24th, 2017, to add a section to include an enforcement mechanism.
Alderman from the, Alderman from the 6th, you recognize on perfection of Board Bill 152 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we perfect Board Bill 152 as amended.
The move by Alderman from the 6th, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 9th. Any discussion? Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, if Alderman from the 6th would yield.
Alderman from the 6th will yield a question until Alderman from the 1st.
I will.
Alderman from the 1st, please proceed.
Yes, Alderman. So I went back through your bill, and so I really support it, but I want to ask this question. What is it that you envision the sheriff's power would be? Because oftentimes with landlord-tenant situations, even when the people call the police, the police will tell them that that is a civil situation and that they can't get involved. So the sheriff is usually the person that when you're actually doing an actual eviction, that you have to actually bring out to the place where the eviction is occurring, and they have to be there to keep the peace so that there is no kind of violence that breaks out between the tenant and landlord, because the landlord has to either hire someone or actually physically put the stuff out themselves. And now they can't put it in on the corner, but they can put them in a trailer or backyard or something like that. But what is your, what is it that you envision that the sheriff will be doing additionally, since the police don't do anything oftentimes?
This would allow the sheriff's office to submit a citation to the landlord who is violating the ordinance. The police have that authority right now. I think there's a lack of capacity for them to enforce it, and also I think some level of just not being close enough to the process to understand it, which is why, since the sheriff's office is already serving evictions and has a more intimate knowledge of what's happening in the court system, they are a smart agency to handle that task.
Okay. Well, then they will be doing more than the police, because every time I have ever talked to anyone who called the police about landlord-tenant situation, the police tells them, oh, it's not our duty. You have to go to court. And specifically, some of the things that would be mentioned, which the landlord cannot do, they take the doors off of places. They do take windows out. They put barking dogs below the tenant. So those kind of things. And the police department won't do anything. They'll say, oh, that's a civil matter, and you have to take that up civilly. So we will see if the sheriffs can do more, because I still do agree that you should not do self-help. I have another problem with this moratorium, and which I'm going to address. Now, I I heard from a lot of people after I talked about the small landlords. People reached out to me to say, yeah, that's my problem. It's not fair. So, but your bill is not anyway connected with that. So, but good luck on getting the sheriff to do what the police don't do. But I am in support of your, your board bill. And last time I cut you off, so now I'm stopping in case you had something else to say. I don't have any further questions.
No, thank you, Alderman. Thank you.
Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. President. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 6th, you recognize close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 6th, second by Alderman from the 9th that we perfect Board Bill Number 152 as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 41 and 153.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Again, it's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Mathias.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Iglesias.
Aye.
Alderman Calder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Roadie.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Twenty-six, aye votes.
My vote, staying the motion and Alderman from the 22nd, third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading reporter Grossman.
Board Bill 151, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, and the following all the persons. Collins Mohammed, Davis, Vaquero, Murphy, Spencer, Pam Boyd, Clark Hubbard, Ballmer, Howard, Gunther, and Gracia, Green, and Grass. An ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis pursuant to section 92 dash, I'm sorry, 92.115, revised statutes of Missouri, the question of whether to continue the earnings tax imposed by the city of St. Louis for a period of five years, providing for an election and the manner of voting, providing that if such a question shall receive the votes of a majority of the voters voting thereon, that such earning tax shall continue and contain the severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 16th, you recognize on third reading and file passage of Board Bill 151.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 151.
Dagan, move by Alderman from the 16th, second by, I think it was Alderman from the 23rd, and Alderman from the 13th. Uh, please proceed, Alderman from the 16th.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, this is the rare occasion that, uh, we have what I believe is unanimous, not unanimous, but close to unanimous, uh, close to unanimous consensus on something that does the city's business and, and does it, uh, in a way that provides city services to all of our constituents and residents uh, by putting this back to the voters. As you know, we are, um, obligated by Missouri law every five years to put the earnings tax back on the ballot, uh, to, to have a vote. I, I hope though that the city's business and this body's business doesn't stop with just, uh, the placement of this. I think it's, uh, behooves all of us, uh, to get out in a responsible way to inform our constituents how critical this revenue source is to, uh, the, the public receiving city services. I know that there will be some coordination and triangulation on, uh, marketing material so that we can, uh, in April, uh, ensure that our residents vote, um, uh, to continue the earnings tax. So stay tuned for more of that coordination. With that, Mr. President, I'll yield if there's any further discussion or questions.
Alderman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just wanted to clarify, I believe that there were a number of us who asked to be added as co-sponsors last week that have not been updated on the agenda. Um, so just, I, I know that we're, we're past that point, but if we went back to review the minutes, I think there were a number of us last week.
All right. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, please make note of that.
Thank you. And I'm, sorry, if I also could speak on the bill, uh, Mr. President. I, um, thank you, Alderman from the 16th, uh, for putting this together, for bringing this forward. Um, I do think that the earnings tax is an incredibly important source of revenue for the city of St. Louis. I think, um, understanding that a third of our city budget goes towards this and, uh, the out states, uh, and Republican influence that has forced us to continue to vote on this, um, is deeply frustrating as a, as a charter city here in Missouri. Um, I also just want to say that I, I'm, I'm grateful for one, one, uh, byproduct of Proposition D is that we will have significantly more voters coming out in April, um, to, uh, for those elections. And so hopefully that will help, uh, again drum up more support for, uh, the passage of the earnings tax. So, um, I will be encouraging my constituents to vote yes when we get down to this. And so, thank you, Mr. President, and Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also was just saying, I was one of those last week who also had asked to be added as a co-sponsor. So just wanted to make sure that the record got clear on that. Thank you.
Right. And the, uh, clerk has been notified. It'll be corrected. Alderman from the first.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, although I am in support of the, uh, board bill, I am not in support of the many exclusions that we have and that people don't even seem to know that we do, um, in which we, uh, remove people from paying the earnings tax. I think it is a valuable tool and source, and we need to make everybody pay it and not make exceptions. We should have no exceptions. Everybody should pay the earnings tax and not, uh, dole it out in little dishes here and there of people who are special and did, and do not pay it. If we were going to, uh, take a group that shouldn't pay the earnings tax, it should be the people who make the lowest amount of money. Um, and that should be the people we should exempt out. Um, as far as the, um, interests that make us have to have this vote every five years, it's the same interest that made us have to go from 28 to 14 and fool the people. I disagree with Alderman, Alderman from the 18th, I'm sorry, the eighth, who says, oh, thanks to Proposition D, we're going to have, uh, more people out in April. That is not, that is yet to be seen and unproven. Um, as I, uh, had to get signatures and tell people why I wasn't going to be a Democrat after all these many years. Um, my community is like, I cannot believe that. We didn't understand that. I know you didn't, okay? You were fooled. Proposition D is a foolish piece of legislation that was, that tricked people. And there are a lot of people that are angry about it, and there are going to be some repercussions that people sitting on this board don't know, but I know. And you're, then you're going to go, oh, I didn't know, just like my community. Um, so it is yet to be seen if Proposition D will bring more people out. I tell you what it's doing in my community. It's confusing people. I am a Democrat. I have always run as a Democrat. I am a proud Democrat. I have disagreed with a lot of things that the Democrats do, but I am one. And so forcing me to do and run is something that I'm not, is dishonest to me. Um, but, um, prop, um, back to the board bill, Board Bill 151, um, we do need, uh, revenue. We cannot survive without it. But again, those same forces that you criticize about us having to have this, uh, election every five years, is the same forces that have come back over and over and over again until they finally got passed, uh, to reduce this Board of Alderman, which is going to be devastating to North St. Louis. But some people are tone deaf to that, which is why you, you're getting no votes on things that you usually would get a yes vote on, because you're just being very tone deaf. I am going to support this, but I hope that we look holistically at who's getting exemptions and that we start making everybody who's supposed to pay the, uh, uh, the, uh, earnings tax pay it and stop exempting, exempting out certain people who get special favors. Um, and that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Alderman. Um, Alderman from the 18th.
Uh, first of all, good, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I support this, uh, uh, 1% tax too. However, let me make this crystal clear. North of Delmar, and also I have people south of Delmar who are upset, first of all, by this, uh, capital tax, where the voters voted to have to designate a special tax, and I supported that tax as a Democratic committee man, and I helped get it passed. Now we are using this tax to balance the budget. Uh, and then look at the parks taxes. I supported three different taxes for parks so that our youth, uh, adults and seniors could have activities, because I know the importance of healthy activities. And now they're using these taxes that were designated by the voters to, um, uh, to be used for parks. And, uh, even though we are COVID-19, we could have social distancing, because now we have people's, we need, we need activities under supervision more than ever, because people are now confined. But now what are we doing with the taxes that the voters voted for? We're using it to balance the budget. That's not right. Now, another thing, uh, streets, I have streets in my, in the ward that I represent that have not been paved in five, in 25 years, and alleys, I drive through the alleys wherever I go and drive back on the street, sometimes if it's dark, but I drive through the alleys. And there are potholes, there are alleys that need paving. Uh, uh, and then look at forestry. My old car gets scratched up, but it's already regular, so it doesn't bother me. But it, my constituents have called me because their wonderful car, and that's who I'm concerned about, not me. Their cars get scratched up because forestry will not cut, they have, you have tree limb, branches and other vegetation hanging all over the alleys. I can't even walk through there. So I, some of them so bad, I can't drive through, so I walk through. But I can't get through hardly without getting, again, hit by all this vegetation. What is my main point? I support it 100%. At the same time, I want to see the ward, my taxpayers, get services that they are paying for. And there's absolutely no reason to, for this, for the capital budget to be cut, because that's not what it was the voter voted for. There's no reason not to have activities under supervision with social distancing and mask on, not in, uh, a hand washing material, uh, and that money is, and so I'm supporting it 100% because I do not want our beloved city to go bankrupt. At the same time, we need to, uh, make sure that the city, every, there's enough money for everybody, north, south, east and west, to get services. And there's enough money available to do it, but for some reason, the powers that be who have the authority will not assign workers where they need to be assigned, rather than assigning them to some desk to pass paper back and forth to each other, which doesn't benefit the taxpayers. And so all I'm saying is I support it, but, uh, we need to, uh, do a better job of providing services to all the citizens. Because that, and they always talk, I represent part of the central western. My central western constituents don't always get the services people accuse them of getting. I'm saying that, uh, so, and I drive through the alleys in the central western, and we got some bad alleys for the peoples who don't know the central western that have need paving in the central western and north of Del, north and south of Delmar. So I will close with, thank, with that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Alderman from the 18th. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 16th, you recognize close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I renew my motion.
Been moved by, uh, Alderman, then, um, uh, it's been moved by Alderman from the 16th and second about Alderman from the 23rd and the 13th, and we third read and file pass Board Bill 151. Madam Clerk, please call Rose.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderman Middlebrook.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Colder.
Aye.
Alderman Rice.
Aye.
Alderman Gunther.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Grass.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman Howard.
Aye.
Alderman Green.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Roadie.
Aye.
Alderman Todd.
Aye.
Alderman Davis.
Aye.
Alderman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro.
Aye.
President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd.
Aye.
Twenty-seven, aye votes.
My vote, staying motion on Alderman from the 16th and third read and finally pass Board Bill 151.
That's the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill one, I'm sorry, Board Bill 41, 151, and 153.
All other business being suspended, the president shall an open session of fixiss signature here too today, and that these may become law. Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on motion for the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
Dagan, move by Alderman from the 19th, uh, entertain a second on that motion. I didn't catch that.
Second.
A second about Alderman from the 22nd, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Dispense with line items 21 and 22 miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Tuesday, November 24th, Neighborhood Development will have a meeting via Zoom at 9:00 AM. Streets will have a meeting at 1:00 PM via webinar. The office will be closed Thursday and Thursday, November 26th, and Friday, November 27th, in honor of Thanksgiving holiday. Those are the announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Any further announcements?
Mr. President.
Uh, Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you very much, members of the board. I'd like to, uh, give recognition. Uh, last week, there was a lot of things going on in my, uh, on my agenda. But I'd like to give recognition to the Hartland Black Chamber of Business and Commerce that is now located at 929 North Spring and one of the Urban League facilities. Uh, over the years, I have to recognize Marvin Steele for all the time and energy that he took to bring this organization together to assist small businesses, most especially minority, to not only establish themselves, but sustain and acquire additional financing and operational tools to help them. Uh, and I'm sorry that I didn't do it last week, but I'm doing it today. And if I could just to have one more moment of privilege, I need to also recognize a constituent of the 19th ward who was more like a second mother to me. And, uh, they had her services on Monday. Lenora, Lenora Coleman Underwood was such a beautiful person. And she supported a lot of us with her volunteerism, cooking for us when we needed it, when we worked 18, 20 hours a day to make us sit down and eat. She was a loving, giving person for this city, and we have lost her. And I know her family is grieving with her three children. As a single mom, made sure that they all graduated from college. Uh, it just, it's a, it's a loss, and I had to say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I just want to take a moment and acknowledge that today is also, um, national. is also National or World Trans Remembrance Day. And I would like to ask that the board take a moment of silence and recognition and remembrance of all of those in the trans community that we've lost this year.
All right. Will everyone join us in a moment of silence in memorance of all the members of trans community that we've lost this year and over time? Thank you for that, Alderman.
Thank you.
Alderman from the 1st.
Mr. President, members of the board, I sponsor a resolution today. I've been a very fortunate person in that many of my constituents are turning 100 this year, which being members of African-American community is something that is so great in itself because we have a much lower life expectancy than whites do. So my next door neighbor turned 100 on July the 2nd. I've had several other people. In fact, three people in that place have turned 100 since I've lived here, which is extraordinary. But I have Mrs. Bernice Trice, who lives two blocks over from me, and I speak to probably a couple of times a month or more. She turned 100 yesterday. She is full of life. Her memory is in full force. She recounted back in the 90s how she took over a block unit because they wanted their street closed, and the block unit chair would not go along with what they were doing. And she's full of spirit. She and her husband owned DW Trice Realty, which her son still owns. And I just wish this board to join me in wishing her a happy 100th birthday. I hope I'm her if and when I get to be 100.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Bernice Trice.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Mrs. Trice.
We also need to find out what's in the water over in the first ward. That's some good living over there. Alderwoman from the 14th.
Yes, I'd like to congratulate the Alderwoman from the 1st on establishing her blue zone over there for longevity.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Also, I'd like to remind people to have a good Thanksgiving. We won't be meeting as a body between now and the holiday. Please be safe and be careful. Conduct your gatherings on Zoom and keep socially distant. These are hard times for everybody. We've all been touched by the, I personally have been touched by the virus, and it's not a good thing, and it's really hard on families.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Thank you.
And that's all. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Oh, thank you. And thank you for those words, Alderman. Any further announcements? Any further announcements?
I forgot one, Mr. President.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you very much. We also lost one of our great musicians in the last week, too, Amos Brewer. And if you ever heard him play a saxophone, he was incredible. He was trained by Miles Davis. He's played all over the world. He had a massive heart attack, and they're having his services this weekend. But I needed to acknowledge him.
Okay, so everyone, please join in sending out our thoughts and prayers to Mr. Amos Brewer. And Alderman from the 19th, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to excuse the Alderman from the 21st and Alderwoman from the 26th due to necessary absence.
Daggone. Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second by Alderman from the 10th, I believe. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move to adjourn until December the 4th, 2020.
Daggone. Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, second by Alderman from the 10th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Stand adjourned. Everybody have a good holiday. Looking forward to talking to you right after December 4th.
You too, sir.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.